Let me call to order the meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. It's Thursday, twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M. Can we have all to order first?
Chair Hertzfield is absent, Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don Zellum.
Present.
Jared Newcomb, absent. Ken Kennedy, absent. Mr. Larson.
Here.
Don Hoine.
Yeah.
Cole Middleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, next item. Next on the agenda is the minutes. Four minutes promotion for one. You have other comments? Do you want to do the question? That's the question we use. The United States of America, interior republic, religious families, one nation, under God, indivisible, its liberty and justice for all. Well, I when we paragraph the top of page six. So now we have ten lines. The ones there is a sentence like the previous plan was included within the open space which meets the minimum requirements. I proposed leading which meets the minimum requirements. One of the questions had last week was what was the actual open space after adjustment? Easements drainage and the like.
And I'm sorry, I've been having a hard time hearing you because the microphones are away. You guys can hear me screaming across the room. But you're going, please make sure you've got the mic on and it's close to you when you talk for the purposes of the record and the person doing the minutes. So you were where again, Chair? Page six?
Yeah. Line eight halfway through it starts like the previous plan is included within the open space. I propose to leave which meets the minimum requirements. Question we're gonna ask tonight. I hadn't, I had, that was my own comment. Do we have any motions regarding the minutes?
Hang on. That came from what staff presentation?
Page six. Page six of them.
Okay, no, I'm trying to just make sure I know where I am in the meeting. Okay, so you were seeking clarification? Okay, so I think in conjunction with the sentence prior to that, because when we look at the original plan that was proposed. It appeared that the open space and the easements were intertwined, if I remember correctly. So. So what they're saying is.
It's included within the open space, the exact acreages of them.
Yeah, that the. The easement and drainage acreage within the open space is not known. Like the previous plan, it is included within the open space. So what did you, what, are you asking for a change and specifically what is it?
To delete, which meets the minimum requirements.
So just delete that phrase?
Yeah.
Okay.
If other people agree, you know, we have to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes with the recommended amendment to delete, which meets the minimum requirements.
Second.
Oh, second.
And who was that?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, next we move on to. Item, item four regarding. P U D twenty twenty four dash O three. And S U B twenty twenty four dash O three, clients of camera P U D and preliminary plat amendments. This is the item we all began. Last March twenty eighth that was continued till today. If events continue, there is. No provision for public, public hearing on this, continuing the matter or discussion with. Karen said she might have a couple introductory ones for us.
Um, yeah, you were, you were pretty much covering it there, but just a, a reminder that it was that continuation from March twenty eighth. And yeah, the public comment period is closed and at the end of that meeting, as you saw in the minutes, the commission had specifically. Asked for information from the applicant regarding the open space area. So that's where we pick up this evening.
Okay, with that, I see one person, yeah, we had different before. Would you like to make any, like just come forward, identify yourself and you have any comments or follow up from our discussion? Last meeting.
Give that, thank you. Again, my name is Jim Howe. I'm with Kimberly Horn. I'm the project manager or the, the planning lead on this particular application, actually two applications. Uh, thank you again for this time to kind of, I guess, reiterate a few things, clarify some things and, and. Bring some information to you as requested. I think quickly, we just kind of, maybe just to recap real quick. And you have control of it. Right, okay.
Yes, can you see it?
I can see it, yes. I thought I would, we've added some slides to the slideshow, kind of fill in some of those questions that you had.
Right.
And, and also have a handout. But I think, you know, I guess context, everybody knows where we're at. Uh, the next slide is really the, the site plan. Again, no change in what the application is requesting at this point. Would that be inside the next slide? Uh, just for reference, again, this one has a little extra color on it from the last time. Uh, you can see the blue, obviously that's blue is for water. So again, it's related to the utilities on site. Green is the wastewater. Uh, the purple is the drainage easements. And, uh, and then we'll break this down as we go to next. Uh, and then the yellow areas along sourdough and along, um, highway sixty seven are the. Other offsite utilities, uh, the ones along sourdough are the overhead electric. The ones along sixty seven are the underground water, wastewater and a gas like there. The next slide. The next slide gets to the, the heart of your original questions and. In the wake of the discussion last time. There was, I guess, a different approach that was taken with the original. P U D. And our last presentation discussed in, in the same context for the same math exercise or. Formula, I guess, uh, that was used with that original P U D, uh, but for your questions, we've broken this down further. And to be consistent, we've also prepared the vote. So if you look, there's a column that says twenty. That's wrong. Twenty four or twenty twenty four, it's not square feet anyways. Year, um, that's the, that's the year. And then twenty nineteen is the, uh, is the previous approved P U D. Uh, if you go along here, we tried to color code things here. I don't know if it printed the same, but existing easements. Uh, reflected in a plan accounts for two point eight acres of the site. So that again accounts for the light green that you're seeing around the edges. And the twenty foot easement that goes down through the center, which is platted as part of the original filing for the drainage. And we'll get a little more detail as you get into this.
Can I add? Which portion of the green is drainage? Which portion is open space that's not drainage?
The dark green.
Dark?
Your color code is on your sheet here.
So then?
So we've matched the open space that we're accounting for is all in the dark green. The light green, which is actually the top. The cop columns or row of your spreadsheet there is the utilities.
Utilities and drainage.
Yes. So those are existing, existing utilities on the site. The light green areas and the drainage.
What's, what's the width of the drainage?
Twenty foot.
Pardon?
Twenty foot.
That is that, is that normal? Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was applied prior to us even on the property. So.
Jim had a question. So based on your revised calculations, um, I guess what we're seeing here is your. Is your current approved application not compliant? With the open space requirement?
It's twenty nine percent. So that exceeds the.
No, no, your current approved.
Oh, the current one. According to the new breakdown, yes, but the way the math was done originally. There was a difference. So we broke this down for your request last time.
Yep, just wanted to clarify, I think.
Yeah.
I, I think a lot of times it hasn't been looked at. If the open space isn't all space without a building in the way, it's.
I think another thing, just to clarify with the previous one, if you see the note at the bottom. There was a, a large, um, no build buffers on those lots that accounted for additional. Open space that wasn't included in the count, but was part of the. There was, I guess, another layer of. Preservation, I guess, on the lots that were provided with the last tour. So that's the only difference you'll see here. Uh, does that make sense or do I confuse you?
No, no, it makes, makes first sense. I mean, I can see parts of this have the character of open space, but technically don't meet the definition, so. I assume, I think that's what you're referring to in the prior with the buffer on the lot.
Right, maybe they were, there was a preservation easement placed on all the lots, but it wasn't, it was private open space, it's not public private. Yeah.
Thank you.
And you can see the breakdown of the roads, the new easement, which is basically the, the drainage. Drainage pond. That's again the same, that's the light blue square. And then I think the other thing to note is. The. While we've shown some increase of open space, if you look at, at the top there or mid, mid page. Uh, twenty percent decrease in the lot disturbance. So that we've contained, again, the limits of disturbance on the site as a whole, maintaining as much of the. The buffer quality and open space, uh, around the outside of the property itself. Does spreadsheet, spreadsheet make sense? So again, just the point there is a twenty foot, twenty one percent increase in the open space from the original. And then we've also had a twenty four, twenty one percent decrease in the area of potential disturbance on the property. From the development standpoint, the footprint area. Uh, the next slide, I want to just kind of take you through the property a little bit. And so here's a view and you can see the little map up in the corner from where. We're taking pictures and this is just a representation of those pictures, uh, sticking from the back of the lots. Facing the highway. So again, we have about a hundred and ninety foot buffer setback from the highway with this angle. Next slide. Uh, going back to your drainage question. Um, kind of the little ugly piece of the drainage is right there at sourdough road. There on the one slide. The rest of the images are kind of walking down that drainage. There's no real defined drainage path at this point. It's, it's an easement that's been provided. So you got a sense of that character. You can see a few little difference in things where the snow is stuck. But that's the drainage characteristics of the drainage. Next slide. Uh, this is looking back towards sourdough from the back of those lots. Uh, this is taken actually from one spot, kind of a snapshot panoramic kind of feel. For reference. Uh, you can see it's a pretty healthy forest as well. It's not too thick. It's, but it's. It's a pretty nice stand of trees. Next slide. This again is kind of at the north end looking towards, uh, the county residence. Uh, we're about a hundred and eighty feet to the closest structure. From our, from our property, our back lots. So again, that's the nature of the landscape. Next slide. And, and this is the, the picture that intend, is intended to kind of capture what, uh. Our, our project is intended to do as far as open space or preservation of open space. Kind of that passive open space and trails is really intended to be open for, for the residents to define in some ways. Uh, we're focusing on the wildlife, wildflowers and native grasses. Again, that's the, the hope with preserving these large buffers around. Uh, the enclave of the houses. The next slide gives us another little, uh, section through the property. Uh, again, you can kind of see the little section line in the map down below. Or right again, that in this case about a hundred and seventy, but at this point, a hundred and forty at, uh, at the sourdough side. Which is about almost fifty fifty. It's a little less about fifty four percent, uh, or fifty four percent of is really held by the, the lots themselves. There's about three hundred and seventy five feet there. Disturbance and, uh. Kind of. Development zone for the houses themselves. Uh, with that said, uh, the next slide. We want to just kind of recap a few things from a landscape and character, uh. Perspective, there's no change in what we originally were proposing. We're still looking at. Kind of small accents and some wildflower findings and maintaining the forest, uh, character as much as possible. Next slide. Preserving that, uh, landscape as much as possible through, uh, mitigation. Uh, I think there's been a fairly decent amount of. Negation historically done on the property, the goal is to keep that up and maintain that. Next slide. Uh, the improvements again were, were. Were embracing the, the conditions of, of this application and what was originally approved was the sourdough improvements. Next slide. Again, maintaining the corridor, the character of the landscape around the property and the enclave. Next slide. Again. The relationship to the trail. Next slide. Uh, we've, we've actually had the opportunity to spend more time since we, the comments were coming in late last time from. Both American engineering staff and C dot have had more time to kind of regroup with them and, and we have a good game plan. Uh, moving forward for C dot and the timing of the improvements there, which would all be incorporated and expressed through the, the development review or the development agreement. Uh, we're still, uh, tempting to finalize his thoughts with, with, uh, public works and the utility side. We've reached out a couple of times and just making a connection hasn't happened since our last meeting. So we'll continue to push there, but we don't have any doubt that. Uh, we understand what that will potentially look like, will look like. So next slide. Again, nothing that changed from our proposal since we last discussed. I think we're just looking at some phasing, uh, phase one and phase two. Uh, kind of. Min minimizing our impacts on the site as we go through this, taking improvements, the offsite improvements as well. No change in the drainage. Um, what we did not show and what I should have mentioned on your little handouts, you can also see we identified the trail. And were we planning to have a connection into the, with kind of formalized it with the line here, connection to the neighborhood itself. Um, so I didn't want to forget about that until we got too far away. Uh, again, no changes here in what was proposed with utilities, uh, drainage and so forth. Next slide. Uh, architecture wise, again, we're going to embracing that woodland park, small mountain town, architecture and materials. Next slide. Uh, we also wanted to take a moment to kind of give you a sense of scale on the, on the lots. So these again are sixty five by a hundred and twenty foot lots. Uh, setbacks, uh, twenty five front, twenty five rear and eight foot side as discussed. The white line represents the white dashed lines around each of those units represents, uh, the setbacks. Uh, those buildings, uh, again, just placeholders, but we wanted to give you some different scale. Those are, those are approximately a twenty thousand per twenty, two thousand square foot, sorry, uh, footprint. Uh, so these buildings could be anywhere from two thousand to potentially three thousand if you went three or two.
Will you move on to that picture?
Pardon?
The. Building is a twenty five foot setback from the road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Those vehicles look like pickup trucks, so they could be pickup trucks which approach, which tend to be eighteen, nineteen, some close to twenty feet long. And this, the scale doesn't seem to match. Those are. Or maybe those are just small vehicles.
Well, what's not showing here, I guess, is actually that, that's from the road. Uh, shoot, we messed that up again. The, the fifteen foot easement on there as well. So there's, that's actually from the curb versus the right of way. So I apologize again, sorry.
Setbacks are measured from the.
Property line.
Setbacks are measured from the property line. So your graphic is measured or shown from the curb.
From the curb.
So property line is often behind the curb. So you would end up with a bigger distance. In there.
Okay, and I call it because. We, heck, and so as density increases, you have concerns that the driveways get short.
Right.
It's, it gets to be. This.
Well, that's a good catch though, because we should have had the line on there for the right of way and that's what's missing.
The, the property line.
The property line, right? Yeah. They're, they're the same, but yeah, obviously.
I'm sorry, Mr. Oak, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, anyway, so just want to give you a sense of, of what that, what that footprint looks like with this, uh. With the second follow up meeting, so. I think the next slide is kind of more a recap of it. We do, we do, uh. We do believe that, you know, we've, we've honored the zoning of the P U D here. Staying less than two, uh, units per acre. Uh, we've also respected, uh, the water, uh, that's been earmarked for this, uh, P U D area as well by staying less than two, two units per acre. Uh, we are agreeable to the conditions of approval, uh, meaning that, uh, that, um. The part fees, the development agreement will be in place with final plaque. All the improvements will be made. C doc. Improvements will be improved. Uh, final grading, rose control plants and, and the engineering drawings would be, uh, completed, uh, per city standards. Have no concerns with that. And with that, I would, uh, open it back up for some questions to see if I can answer any other. Thoughts or questions you had.
Yeah, gentlemen, I appreciate it. I think you addressed all the questions, at least that I had. Um, with the possible exception of, um, how do you intend to handle the water loop?
The cross the highway, is that?
Well, presumably across the highway. I don't know what your intention was and how to solve that, but that seemed to be an open unresolved issue last time.
Now, I mean, if you want to go back a couple of slides. There you go. So, so again, the, the, the easement that's already there for the drainage. Carries a historical flow. Uh, right through there. That's been captured in our modeling. Uh, we're still, we're still at a, I guess, a preliminary stage with the final report. Um, but the, for state statute, we have to release water from the property. At historic rates or less, and the goal really is a slight less. So we capture. Build in some, uh, buffer into that release. Uh, so the, the pipes that are there today that run underneath, there's two of them that run underneath the highway. Would continue to function as they function today. Uh, C dot, C dot did not have any, uh, specific questions about that, uh, or, or. Comments about, uh, them doing any, needing any updates. Uh, but we've looked at them and, and we don't think they'll have any impact there. Uh, the wire for our site will be captured in the pond. So all the impervious area will be captured in the pond and released. Uh, less than historic flows into the channel, uh, just to the north and then that will come down to a natural pattern. Uh, so we're capturing as much, um. Well, all the disturb areas would come into our pond. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
Kind of looking across the way here to. Not an expert on these, but. Does that resolve the issue?
It, he is addressing the stormwater and that is very typical that what is the historical rate? And whatever your changes are, um, you don't want to increase that historical flow. So as he was just explaining that pond is part of what helps, um, keep things at the historical rate that it goes into that pipe and, and, and into the other infrastructure. Um, and C dot does partly look at hydrology in terms of when they look at development like this.
Was there also concern with the water supply lines? For like?
There was a comments from our utilities director, um, on placement and dead end line versus loop line. Cause we have. X amount of residential units can be allowed on a dead end line. Uh, they'll work in the utilities department, but off the top of my head, I.
It's twelve.
Which is clearly an excessive twelve, so. So, so is, is it assumed when they apply for all the utility permits that that will be addressed then?
Yeah, as far as timing of addressing that, so within the conditions of approval that staff has set forth within the staff report. They do have to, um, address all of the comments related within the city red line comments. Prior to final approval of the preliminary plat. And then, um, like our director always says, the preliminary plat is more of a outline, right? And then we, rough draft, we go, then we go into the, um, final plat.
Right.
So our final plat, you all would see this again. And our utilities director and C dots and all of our referral agencies would review the final plat as well.
I guess more of a judgment of looking, trying to avoid the potential dead ends.
As far as the water line goes, yeah, so.
Is there a way to resolve this that has been conveyed or?
Yeah, I think as Jim alluded to, looping that water line instead of having a dead end.
And is that the plan?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we haven't been able to finalize it yet because the, our. Our meetings haven't quite finalized it.
Yeah. Yeah, from, from the last discussion, it didn't sound very. Gelled.
Well, we, we just saw the comment the night, the night before, so we didn't have a chance to. We've been trying to get a meeting together, but, uh, we had some vacations in our utilities department and our utilities director did recently have surgery, so. You know, uh, those kind of things happen with a small snines municipality, you know, so.
I want to make sure there's a viable path for, that's my concern.
Uh, that, that would be, I think, the case regardless if, if this passed. Or it's, this application went forward or not. I mean, even with the current application, you'd have to meet those same criteria, so.
How many, what do you? Lots are on the upper line? Upper water line?
Coming on the upper water line?
Um, in phase two, where the line cuts off to the northeast and then goes east. How many lots are there? No, not so far.
There's eighteen in phase two and twenty one in phase one.
Yeah, where you're pointing now, how many, if there's, it looks like that, well, it looks like that's a dead end line.
Looks like there's, I count eleven.
Is it eleven?
I'm just counting.
Okay, I'm, I.
I can't, I can't tell.
Unable to count.
I, I, I can't tell on the ones that are closest to that main line where they're, where they're tapped in.
Yeah, we can, ten on that, on that line.
Okay. Yeah, presumably the closest one to that main line is tapped in off the loop. What will be able to.
Yeah, there's a water line that runs right along sixty nine or sixty seven as well. So we're tapping at both sides there. Uh, and then serving, um, the other off the legs.
And when? Can you tell me with the phasing, how this is supposed to be in place for all of phase one?
You would have to be, yep.
Okay.
So the water, the water or wastewater extension would have to have, but all the way up to the, the other lot, lot two of the filing.
So is the water, the waterline would go up to the, the cul-de-sac in phase two, cut across the road.
Correct.
And other houses in phase two and the street would be hooked in. They would be hooked into that. In a separate phase.
That, that he did not know and put in claim, but yeah, the first phase would be connecting here. Up loop. And then ultimately the next piece would be built, that piece, and then the last piece would be the second phase would be the top of the, the top of the area.
I guess, I think, Don, I had this, I had the same sense you did, it was a little unclear about looping the one, that was. That was not a contentious point. Another case where we had projects done on a phase basis. Um, like the Haven and Upper Paradise, for instance, a specific division was put in. Waterline had to be looped within the completion of phase one.
Yeah, with the number of homes, they don't, I don't think they have a choice. They have, they'd have to complete that loop even to do phase one, but just by the number of homes.
As long, as long as that's clear, because that had been sort of my thought for me, there's something maybe may need to be added to a condition, a condition if it's not. It's not clear.
Our utilities director is very, very protective of the water system, as you gentlemen know. So, um. I, I can't imagine this missing his purview and, or his, his, his eye when he looks at the construction drawings or the next phase of things. In terms of what's looping, exactly how many houses are where and, um, CJ. In terms of what's looping, exactly how many houses are where, and um CJ, I don't. Isn't there a comment in there, the red lines, that these two arcs that go off towards sourdough? That those two also need to be connected to to further that.
Talking about looping the water lines needed to be addressed or something, I don't. It's hard, it's hard to read the small points like that.
Yeah.
It was.
I believe that's already in the red line in terms of addressing the.
The red line saying something needs to be addressed, which is a little different than saying it needs to be done.
And it's pretty typical with these, you know, larger, I'd say subdivisions, preliminary plots, final plots, that staff. Meaning planning, engineering, utilities meets with the developer, which we didn't totally intend to do, but like I said, just scheduling conflicts and. Vacations and surgeries have gotten in the way of that since last meeting, so.
Um, and and then I'm sure you notice sometimes the the red line comments we get aren't always as assertive as I would like. Uh, so hence the the passive nature of the comment you were you were just referencing. Uh, that something, what did you just say, something needs to be addressed? Um, as opposed to being a little more specific about what they they needed to do.
But plain and simple, they'd have to either address it in phase one or request a variance, and. I'm I'm getting the sense that the commission would be somewhat disinclined to approve a variance, so. But it sounds, it didn't sound like you guys have any concerns about that, that that's the plan, correct?
No, right, I mean, obviously, we're not, we're not back before you unless that's solved, so. At this point.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'll go next, um, I mentioned in our first meeting that most of my concerns are related to, um. I guess it's section eighteen dot thirty dot one ten, which is the dimensional standards. And the section that speaks to harmony with the surrounding areas. Um, and the second part of that provision, um, it goes into um our role in planning commission to approve. Um, your dimensional standards. Um, and I brought this up with CJ prior to the meeting, but um, as I understand it on page seventeen of what the city handed out. Um, you're proposing a forty percent um maximum uh coverage area for the lots. Um, and based off what we would typically uh have for our land use intensity ratio table, that's outside. And so, um, part of my concern, and I'll get into this as we go along, is that we're. Maybe a little bit outside the bounds of what P U D is intended for. Um, and so I'm just curious, the justification for. Why we should approve something that's outside these bounds that we typically approve.
Could could you maybe expound them? In what way you think it's out of bounds, because it's considerably lower density than what we just approved at prior meeting? In terms of the immediate housing density, where it was something like seven per acre. Um, in where the homes were concentrated. And the pines, um, pines at Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge, thank you.
I'm sorry, Seth, hey.
Uh, just pines and Stone Ridge, they were they were packed in about seven per acre, um, now, the the P U D was bigger as we, as I learned. And so that's how they met their uh usage density.
But there's also weren't single family homes or.
They were.
They were like conjoined, right, duplexes?
They were patio homes and.
Townhomes.
Townhomes, so so they were, they were touching, but they were single family units, I believe.
Right, the pines at Stone Ridge is part of the larger Stone Ridge planned unit development.
Right.
Um, so that's actually several hundred acres in its entirety, and back when the original um. Preliminary plat and planned development was put into place, they identified a couple of tracks for apartments um and town home develop or patio home development. And those were since um revised. You know, to to make that intertwined development that you guys saw, and that had previously been approved, so what you guys looked at last meeting. Was just an extension of a prior approval for that.
Right.
And then also related to that several hundred acres, um, they did a substantial land dedication for parks, and that's the Meadowwood Sports Complex. That that land area came out of the the um Stone Ridge Planned Unit Development. So that's how that.
You, I'm I'm trying to come to a an understanding of what a P U D is really set out to do.
Yeah, so.
It talks about being creative, um, which that's.
So maybe I'll speak to that first, so within that section. Um, the first part on harmony asks us to, in order to make that determination, at least this is how I'm understanding this, right? The lot area per dwelling unit within a planned unit development exclusive of the area occupied by streets. Will be in harmony with the surrounding areas, and then it tells us to reference. Beginning of the P U D, which is why a P U D exists in the first place. Um, and then those are listed out A through E. In section eighteen dot thirty dot zero three zero. Um. And I'll, my answer for all these, I'll let the commissioner read them on their own, is that. Building at this density level doesn't actually comply with anything that we would typically. Say a P U D is designed for. Um, you know, there's no unusual features on the property. There's no historical characteristics there, um, there's no P U Ds in the surrounding area except for across the highway. Um, and there's nothing unique about this design, um. Yeah, that.
So, yeah. So I'm not, I'm not trying to argue against you, because I went through these exact same machinations.
Yeah, these are just kind of my thoughts of.
So as I read this section, just second, as I read this section, I think that applies to when it's originally zoned a P U D.
I understand that, but when we're talking about whether, you know, in that later section where I have to make a determination on whether this. Density level is in harmony with the surrounding community.
Yeah.
And the only thing I have to base that off of is the surrounding communities are suburban residential. I can't. I can't rationally come to that conclusion. For me.
Yeah, I guess D would be the strongest, the the design illustrates a unique urban design concept of the property relates to adjoining properties. Um, I would typically, the densities increases you near the highway. So it's seems fairly natural to me, but once again, I'm unlike you, I'm a little, I'm a little lost.
Yeah, I.
What makes something a P U D versus makes something not a P U D?
Right, and I mean, based off what.
So sorry, Karen and I interrupted you, that one isn't done.
Well, and based off what Karen said about the previous P U D that we proved at Stone Ridge.
Let me jump in on something too, along the same lines of Cole was talking about. Not disagreeing with.
Yeah.
Point made, that was with the setting up the P and D zone district. In the subdivision, in the subdivision seventeen oh four dash oh eighty. Says in interpretation provision, these regulations following provision shall govern. And in their interpretation application to provision these regulations should regard as minimum requirements. In fact, in public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, prosperity and wealth. Oh, which leads me to believe that there's a role for. There's a role, there's a role for us to consider beyond, did we meet, we meet each minimum requirement? And if I could address, I'd even ask Mr. Hulk, can he, can he help articulate for us? Those things that. Exceed the minimum, choices, choices made by the developer provide added enhancements to. Improve the property for the residents there, for the neighbors of the area, and for the city as a whole.
I I'd like to actually back up one, one step before that, if you don't mind, uh, as a fact of a P U D, um. The P U D was a zone that was identified prior to us. Uh, a P U D is by default a custom. Custom zone.
Right.
Um, and I would guess that every P U D across the community here has a little different. Set of criteria, dimensional standards and such, so. If if this would have been a a standard zone, then we'd be working in a standard zone criteria, this. This opened the door to do something a little different, and I think it's different than what we see across sourdough, which is big lots, um. And really, little arc of open space in a sense. So they just have bigger lots, in this case, we thought it was appropriate to preserve as much of. The. The natural stand of pine trees there. Which makes, you know, makes the corridor heading out of town pretty nice. Um, also provides uh a buffer for those neighbors behind, and I think your 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 natural. Uh, your comment about naturally seeing a little more density as you get closer to a um. A, you know, urban corridor or highway is is a normal land use transition exercise. Um, and I think that's, again, we were recognizing that. Uh, again, we're seeing underneath the allowable, which was set by the P U D originally, those two acres. Which also then tied back to the water, uh, uh. The water accounting may be better, this is easy way to say it for the city, uh, on this parcel and as in this part of the P U D. Um. I think the other thing, um. Was the idea of. Creating housing opportunities and and options is is a is a great way of stabilizing communities and neighborhoods. Uh, giving people one step up and the next step to a bigger house. That's part of what we're trying to accomplish as well, there's a, there's a. There's a market here for that, we have uh school teachers and and police department folks that are coming up the hill, right? So can we find a place for them to fit in here, and that's again, kind of hitting that little middle, middle market. Um. And uh, the the clients and team have done a lot of research, understanding that's that's a. Of. An opportunity here to serve the community in lots of ways, but at the same time, I think we're doing a good job with preserving as much of the open space. Characteristics of the lot. Uh, both for uh those that pass the corridor, but also that live in the neighborhood uh to the east. Um, by preserving as much of the the landscape, natural landscape that's there today. Um, I think one other point is related to your Stone Ridge con- conversation last month. Uh, there was a seven units per acre across the whole board. Um, so they had to have an average across the whole development, so, um. Even though they have higher density developments within Silver, so, and some bigger density, bigger lots as well, so. Um, that would be a good expression of how the P U D was defined or developed at that time too, so.
Yeah, I I think the the crux of my area, and a lot of what I read in here about a P U D. Is that it's meant to be an efficient design that utilizes the open space and provides. You know, a better open space than what we would just typically get, right? I don't understand the value that the citizens would be getting by having smaller lots. And quote unquote, more open space, if you're going to have a three thousand square foot home. Which, as I mentioned uh last meeting, you know, typical American family, two parents, two kids. If that land's just going to be used as private access anyways. So I don't. Just by shrinking the lot and saying, oh, well, look at all this open space, this doesn't necessarily mean that that. It's like unutilized open space, and the point of it is to be utilized open space parks and. You know, more efficiency, part of the preliminary development plan here is that there needs to be uh a proposed non-residential uses. What's that, the little link to the trail, I don't. I'm just, I'm confused about what the benefit the citizens are getting for the open space that's provided.
You're you're can, I guess you got me a little confused, you're saying citizens, and then you're saying residents, so so. So both, right, it's two tier, right, there's residents that live there. Who I'm assuming are going to use much of the open space to the rear of their properties, that's not on their lot. And then part of the preliminary development is they're supposed to be used for non-residents also. And as I read a P U D, as I read the code here. My understanding is that a lot of what a P U D is centered around is providing value in that open space. And I don't look at your plan and go, oh, there's a ton of value in this open space. That would allow me to justify being outside what I would consider in harmony with the surrounding districts. Does that make more sense? Hope I'm articulating that appropriately.
But what would you do with an awkward triangle that abuts the highway on its longest side? It's only twenty acres and would be economically viable for someone to develop, what else would you do?
What's wrong with the original that proposed?
Well, this one, this one by. By the standards, it's not only compliant, where the other one's not compliant, um, but it has more open space, and so. I feel it's more in line with what I interpret a P U D to be, but like I said, I'm still a little. Still a little open on on what that exactly that's intended.
Also remember the perks of Rick Board's recommendations on this project was take fees in lieu of land. Which benefits the citizens more than the land would in that project, plus a connection to the Centennial Trail, which is being met.
Okay.
So.
And that's something that we did not hit on in the beginning of this meeting too, um, so you guys all did get a memo within the past staff report. Um, for this meeting here, so staff did route this to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and. Don summarized that recommendation perfectly, so thanks.
And Cole, I think this is very important when we look at those uh. Design characteristics and goals and objectives and how that relates to our comprehensive plan. You know, and certainly there, when you look at the comprehensive plan, there's going to be goals and objectives that are going to be. Seem to be opposed to each other. And that's part of our responsibility. As we review these projects, to say, well, this particular project. Will not be in complete character with the surrounding area. At the same time, we're providing for additional homes and which we know. Our housing uh inventory is very low, and. We need the balance between that neighborhood uh consideration, character. With providing additional housing at a probably a lower cost. Also, also keeping in harmony with the neighborhood that it's around. Many years ago, a commercial project was proposed for that site. Which was basically opposed by the citizens that live on the edges in Kandora Mines. Because they did not want a commercial business abutting their property, or having residential abutting in. Is going to be less objectionable and in character with that neighborhood.
I mean, this is more, I guess, probably as something for city council, but there were citizens that spoke at our last meeting and at the city council meeting, I think two weeks ago. Uh, the initial city councils were sworn in about this. And so I don't, I think there's some citizen concern about this project as well. And I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and and meeting this, and that's. That's all, and I want to make sure I understand it, this is obviously my first like P U D, so, um, yeah, thank you.
You know, I I think this particular, I think we need to look at this particular project as providing for private open space.
Mm-hmm.
Not community. Exactly, and that's the whole idea, the fees and land. And and as private, it's going to serve the residents that own homes. It it won't serve me or you so much, I don't well serve. Uh, community and neighborhood.
Okay.
The the value to you would be when those fees are accepted. Is that that money will be used for maintaining parks, improving parks, acquiring parks in the future in other places, so. Mr. Hulk, I just wanted to tell you that. After our last meeting, we need direction on what and what we're expecting to see with easements and the open space. Your handouts, your presentation today. Answered the questions that I had for that last meeting, so I wanted to say thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
That that clarified in my mind what you were actually intended to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Small issue. Um. Regarding the setback projection, three feet rather than two feet, an indication of last time that was facilitated. So. First of the, the, the distance is in the. P U D amendment, doesn't say how far the setback, how far roof projection can go. Says how far roof projection can go. Into a required setback. One, right, if you see the difference, it doesn't. Um, but I was, I was just wondering about the language, and it came from the previous, the original one, the original plan. Refer to the setback being a maximum of three feet into the adjacent yard setback. And this is, this is on the dimensional nerves on the P U D plan. And it seemed to me we wanted to do something like, because it can't go three feet into the adjacent yard setback, that means it goes three feet into the neighbor's setback.
Yeah.
You know, it goes three feet into the into the applicable yard setback.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds like a a working problem.
Yeah, it's and and it wasn't your problem, it was the problem of the previous one too, it's it's.
I would suggest three feet into the required setback.
At the time we're doing it, I guess. Houses are close enough together, picking on side to side, I'm not certain, I'm comf- I'm not comfortable adding an extra foot on the side yard.
Please, just to be clear, is this in in the city's assessment or is this in their application?
So this is uh.
The P U, the P U D amendment has dimensional standards on the first page.
Okay, so this is under residential use and dimensional standards and that's uh number eight subsection F.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So that was within their application to uh answer your question. Yeah, the intent would be this set on, yeah, within the setback, not.
Do you wanna make that a condition to clarify that that apparent?
I would say it's it's small, it's a small item, but I think we need to write it down.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll let them encroach to the adjacent property.
It's written right on.
Fine until they both decide to.
This is a question for both staff and the applicant at this time. Since the last meeting, have you guys actually sat down and talked about it, or talked on the phone about it, or? This is just from the information that we. Talked about and you know, we put this together and you looked at it, staff.
I don't remember the day, do you?
Do you remember? We we uh have had two phone calls with the applicants. Um but like I said, after the, I guess after the first one, uh the applicant needed to speak with our public works and engineer folks. That has not happened yet, but Karen and myself has have sat down with the property owner and Mister Howke uh two different times.
Okay.
Yes, sir, good.
I noticed that this particular subdivision is actually part of a. Uh we we are repli of an existing subdivision. And we talked about maintaining existing easements, so I assume that those easements that have already been dedicated to the city. During that process, when it was approved and recorded.
That's correct, yeah, like uh on the plat, like Mister Huck mentioned, the twenty foot drainage easement that goes through the property. So yeah, that was done before Mister Garrettson had owned the property, you know, so that was done at. Uh the final plat for the Christian Day Spring Fellowship plat, uh which was. Uh nine or two thousand, the year two thousand.
And again, that's the coolest for the design of this project to be able to incorporate those easements to what you wanna do, so. That's not easy to do.
Any other comments? Or are you satisfied to, and I found it useful, my reference back to subdivision standards are minimum standards, which is to emphasize a new point. If it's, if the minimum is too close to the absolute, what's proposed is too close to the absolute minimum. Should we be insisting upon something better? So that's. I see room for that, I see room for that in your business, that's where you gotta go, I'm not sure.
I suppose I just.
Not sure I'm there.
Yeah, I suppose I just don't under, I don't. It's hard for me to understand the difference between what was originally approved and how those residents are gonna utilize their private lot. Versus putting more dwellings there and those private residents are gonna use open space now, like that to me is the same. Use of land, I I don't see it as being different, I don't see it as being unique and I. It's, it's hard for me not to morally object to something that is so close to the. What we we would say are the the minimum requirements. Uh and I do have concerns about the um the land use intensity ratio. Um you know, seventy, eight hundred square feet on this, thirty-four percent would be what's typically allowable. We're six percent over that in proposal. Um it's within our purview to request that they shrink that down to meet that thirty-four percent. I I just, there aren't very many developments that are like this in the park, I just think it's such a departure from what we typically see that I'm worried that we're setting a bad precedent.
And kind of not arguing against anything you had to say, but kind of the. Maybe looking at it from the other side, when the city zones something and says. These are the standards, two houses per acre, et cetera. Um and if someone comes in and proposes something that meets the standards, I don't feel like we're a very good business partner. We say, oh, yeah, but we really didn't mean. That, we meant something a little smaller, something a little cuter, something a little longer, taller, bluer, I don't know. So that's why I'm I'm always cautious about, you know, creating situation where we're making. Well, where you swear we both, you know, bring me a rock and I'll tell you if I like the rock.
I know, and I I understand, I I am inclined to vote yes for any proposal on this, but I just.
Yeah.
And it's for the citizens to speak to their council members in the council to make this decision in the end. Um the applicant has.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do a quasi judicial plug. Um the, anybody who has issues or concerns about this development. Needs to either submit comments in writing or come to the council meeting as part of the public hearing process. Um they cannot catch somebody in the grocery store, because that's outside the Q J format and that's like. I've got a, I'm sorry, I've been studying German lately, that's like seriously provolting, um so yeah. Like, I'm failing on the English word.
And they have, they they spoke up during the public comment period and.
Yeah, they were all, these were all public comments that.
And and both here and at city.
They were technically outside Q J, but at least they were in a public meeting, so. So at this point, after this meeting or prior to when this is in front of city council on May sixteenth, if somebody has comments or concerns. They really need to submit them in writing or come to that hearing, they should not be talking to individual council members during that interim period.
And and to your point, I I completely agree, right? We're within standards here, you know, having issue, um so.
The zoning would have been really the place.
And and I think that's where my complaint really lies with this, is that I think this, I think it's just zoned improperly.
There are even more explicit provisions for the different contexts, whether it is on or it's fixed in some conditional use permits. Where it says, we have to make a finding, it's in the best interest of the city to grant it. So that's very explicit, make a judgment about overall impact and such too, and here it's. It's it's a little, it's a little less clear. Say, thank you, Karen, the first meeting on this, I had skepticism on this, I appreciated Mister Huck. As Mister Lars, Commissioner Larson said, in the spirit you presented it in, you adjusted questions, I think that that was helpful to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and a few, a couple of comments on draft, on the draft motion. Which was including towards the end of the staff, staff's work. It's, it's a long recommendation, it's um refers to. Approval of the subdivision of the subdivision plan. P U D frontal development plan and provisos, which is quite long. CJ, the the that section, shouldn't that have been provided before that? We approve, first pair and second pair have provided that based on five, is that, isn't that the way it should be worded?
It's sort of this huge run on sentence that starts, the three paragraphs long, but this will be, this.
You can actually eliminate the word that. And I think it covers it. Um I would also suggest uh potentially two different motions maybe easier. Because on that staff recommendation, there's the um the first thing up top. Um which.
Except, except the provisos sort of relate to both documents. So it's actually useful to have.
Okay, yeah, because you're you're dealing with two.
Can you put a, CJ, can you open the screen in the last, last page of your.
Because you're dealing with two different things, um technically, one is the the P U D amendment, um and the other one is the preliminary plat.
Right.
They're they're technically two different pieces.
But, but I think some of the provisos, they go to each one, so. Leave the, put the word provided in, no, what did we put in that? I like provided that's because it.
You wanna do that twice, actually.
We approve A and B, provided that.
Oh, okay.
Based on the findings, yeah. Question. And and I'm a bit of a nitpicker, I made a noises before. Item two. Capital must admit preliminary plan addressing. To the satisf-, I would propose adding to the satisfaction of the city, all comments within the city deadline coming package. That's dealing with the the passivity of the comments, which is covered. Um in four.
And uh Chair, so at the end of number two, do you wanna add?
I just said a dr- after the word preliminary plat addressing to the satisfaction of the city, all comments within the city.
Okay.
I.
In four, we have A, B, C, D currently.
Mm-hmm.
Um maybe make it explicit, I would suggest the E, establish right of way for access to the Centennial Trail. Exactly how it's done, we have schematic here, we have some red line comments and such, but. Let's make it explicit.
You wanna include and and the P and those in both that they recommended?
Um I think that's already covered.
Yeah, that's covered under five B.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I knew it was something. Add an item F. Change the wording of eight F on the P U D amendment, will our projection maximum two feet into the required yard. So that's the required setback. That's good, Karen.
So you changed the dimensional standard from three to two and clarified into the required setback, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
That create a problem?
First thing right now, I can't say one word or another, I think I lost my mind.
Yeah, you got the, you got a, on the drawing, you have a picture of it, but it's not, it's not a formal submit.
Um I did wanna bring one more thing up before we move, so I might have gotten overshadowed by some of my comments earlier, I just wanna ensure that the. The council's okay with the um land use intensity ratio being outside of our typical standards.
Sorry.
So for the, the land use intensity ratio, section seventeen dot forty dot two five zero. The seventy-eight hundred square foot lots are only permitted to be thirty-four percent. Covered and in the amendment that's being proposed, it's forty percent. I just wanna. It's within our purview to allow that, I just wanna make sure that the council understands that it is over what we typically allow.
It's forty percent, that's in the P U D amendment, forty percent numbers.
The forty percent is in the amended version. That, that's what the advocate is proposing, the maximum coverage. That's right, but for the table that I discussed, it's only allowed to be thirty-four percent.
If it were residential, that would be.
And if it were, if it were so, if it was zoned suburban residential. Thirty-four percent would be the maximum. But in this case, since it's a P U D, the developer can and is able to propose their own percentages. In this instance, it's forty.
Is that one you wanna discuss further? Mister Huck is here, can you maybe explain it?
I, oh, I understand it and I'm, I'm okay with, I just wanna, that was one of the issues I wanted to address this evening and I think. Some of my other issues might have overshadowed that, I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that that existed and was accepting of it.
Okay, one, one further suggestion we have is a five A, after with covenants, right satisfactory to the city.
Hmm.
Because there's no point in having covenants that come in, we don't think do provide. We do provide a protection.
And basically, we wanna make sure that they're not conflicted with our code.
Right, and and five B, as I was mentioning, is that part of the building, that's already there, near by the board. Other comments?
So, so, so I don't.
Discussion too.
So, is the city normally in the loop of approving covenants?
No. These, the ci- the ci- city on almost every one of these subdivision requires that you provide. You provide covenants, provide, something, so something similar to this.
Hmm.
And. Is it a copy of information or is it a copy because we want someone to assure that the, that the landscaping will continue to be done and?
Yeah, I just, I just, a little weary about getting setting and making it sound like we're demanding an approval.
Well, we opted the ci- city, city staff. To use reason with this, they come in and require things that don't make sense.
Now, Commissioner Larson nailed it, that we pretty much are looking at them to make sure there aren't setting up conflicting provisions. That that complicate things. Um they can certainly have more stringent standards than what we do in our regulations. But that's up to that homeowners association to to regulate that. Um we're, we're really interested in in really conflicts. You know.
So you'll do a compliance review, basically.
Yeah.
Well, you can go with that, go with that. I don't wanna, not only get a link, but now we are like for public comment for every covenant and.
I think you need to look at it like the covenants are between two, two, two parts.
Mm-hmm.
Buyer and the seller.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we just need to know that.
It's just the words.
Right.
Si- you know, that was agreeable to the city or whatever, the exact, whatever the words were. Gave me a little tingle up the spine that it sounded like we were asking to approve it.
And we, we have to be very careful that we don't ever try to enforce covenants.
Yeah, that's like a dress code.
Requirement if they have some.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have very certain standards and they have to be compliant with city ordinances. Okay.
Okay, well, I had some suggestions, you know, if you interest a motion, we'll need more discussion, and after a motion, you can still have discussion, of course.
Um I I wanted to make a motion um to repeat what several members said. Uh thank you for the clarification, thank you to the, to the commission for the discussion, I I got a lot out of it and I think it. Made this a much more robust process. Um and with that, I'd be willing to put a motion forward to approve the P U D amendment. And for owner and plat, um accepting the uh recommendations of the staff. As with the changes um suggested by uh. Well, just previously. Anything, anyone, anything more we need to add to that? That cover the waterfront?
Yeah.
Do you, do you have, do you have all those notes?
I think I got everything tonight, believe it or not.
Well, with that.
That makes one of us.
Give me a second, though.
A second.
And if you would like, I can go through this in detail for you.
Do you need that or?
No.
Or any, any further discussion? All, all the question.
Who seconded?
Mister Larson.
Thank you. So with that, um Donna Zellam?
Yes.
Um Barry Larson?
Yes.
Donna Hoine?
Yes.
Cole Middleton?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. I do wanna just note that um we are going to have a work session on May ninth at six thirty. Um Nina is uh going to do some training for us, since we've got four new members um on the planning commission. I thought this would be a great time um to to just kind of provide some background and general information and. Um just kind of help draw a baseline, get everybody on the same page a little bit, so I know um a couple of our members have been around for quite a while. Um but uh it's always beneficial, I think, to to kind of get a refresher. And then I've got a couple of new folks joining us in the office, you know, we've made reference um that we have the. He's now our full-time permit tech, uh Grant, it's high. he's now our full-time permit tech, uh granted tie. Um so, you know, he joined us um just a couple of months ago. And then um next Wednesday, our new code compliance specialist joins our team. So I'm asking them to to come join us too as part of their training and onboarding and just kind of help them get a, a good understanding of this aspect of of our operations. So um hope to see you all there for that. Very excited about what Nina's going to bring to us. And then I also wanted to note June twenty seventh, uh that's second meeting in June, we will not have a meeting. Um partly because of city council's schedule, um they need the room that night to conduct business. Um there, the week before, there are the C M L conference and the week after is July fourth holiday. Um so we we need to keep the city business moving. So I I told the city clerk that we would certainly work around that.
Carol, thank you for bringing up the discussion of work sessions. I have a couple that I'd like to have us at least consider.
Okay.
And then one, as everybody knows, is very dear to my heart, is the linking of land use and water usage. And two years ago, we had Kip come in here and give us a presentation on water allocation. And I think it'd be very helpful for the new guys to hear how, how, how that kind of works currently. Our tab management plan, understanding that, what provisions do we have in the conference plan about linking land use and water. So I'd like to ask you to ask Kip to come back to us and talk to us about that.
Okay. Um and I do, we still have the recording from when he came the last time. So um I can find out what the date was for that so that you guys can get a little bit of background information if you want to revisit that, but we can certainly talk to to Kip also about uh an update.
Yeah, please email that out if you find there.
Yep.
And another work session that I'd like to propose, and this is even deeper, deeper thoughts, is to uh sit down with the city council. We have a pretty much a new, new council. Couple people old over from last. But to inform them what we're doing, especially with the code update that we're working on right now. I think it's important for them to hear from the commissioners as well as staff of why we think that's a very important project and why we want, we're doing a very thorough job of reviewing that. Just a couple of thoughts.
And I'm kind of related to that. Um as part of of orientation for the, the new council members, um I was tasked with um talking about the quasi judicial process. So I had forty five minutes to just like brain dump for them and provide all kinds of great context and very hopeful that they found it helpful. And um especially, you know, when you've not you guys know from recently having switched from the audience to up on the dais, it's a little different, a little nerve wracking potentially sometimes. And it's, it's just nice to kind of know where the boundaries are and what's going on. And um I really um used an I use an old example of a conditional use permit from a couple of ye- uh years ago and showed how um the staff report, the PowerPoint, the ordinance, how all that um interconnects. And so it's just very logical, very transparent, um you know, in terms of trusting the information that comes to them and how all that that comes together. So that was, that was part of what we, we shared with them with that. And then on June sixth, I've got, for that city council meeting, I have Roger Bubel, the chief building official with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. He will be uh providing an update to city council under their, their meeting that night, just about um everything that that organization does for us. And um just an update on the, the newer building codes that went into effect a year ago. And just, like I said, it's just a great orientation again for council since we've got new faces and um just highlight the, the services um and the level of expertise that they are able to bring to with the park that as a, a small organization, we, we could not have that level of expertise on staff. Um because they're very active in lobbying with the state when they've got different um codes going through the, the legislature uh as well as, you know, helping the, the homeowner build a nice solid garage at home or a deck, you know, so it's really this, this giant's uh uh variety of tasks and expertise that they're able to provide to our community and and representatives. That's what I got. So thank you for your work session ideas. Um if anybody else has information or requests or or things that you would like to know more about, please let us know at a staff level and we'll do what we can to get that pulled together for you.
Anything else? Are we ready to meeting adjourned?